All right.
Right, so good evening, everyone. I'm John Schneider, the chairman of the ZPA, and we have members Howard Goldman and Nick Legris here to make up a quorum. As you may have heard, we're being recorded and we're also being broadcast over the local cable TV network. So be careful what you say. It's recorded forever. And also just to deal with the technicality, if for some reason, technology fails us and we lose our connection, matters are automatically continued until next month's hearing so that we won't have to re-advertise. But so far, so good at two plus years, it's all worked fine. We have only the Olin matter as a substantive item on our agenda tonight, but first we have to deal with the minutes of last month. Someone want to move to approve the minutes?
Still moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let me read the public notice. 1,000 Olin Way NG Distribution Renewable Development LLC is applied for an amendment to a special permit under section 5.1.3, any other applicable sections of the bylaw to waive parking plans and parking design requirements to permit the installation of 480 kilowatt AC solar canopy array above the existing main parking lot A at Olin College, properties located in the industrial district. So I see we have a lot of people who's going to speak.
Good evening. I will get us started here. I want to thank the zoning board of approvals for inviting us here to present in front of the board tonight. My name is Kristen Tarr. I'm a project developer with NG. NG is here representing Olin College and our proposed carport solar canopy. And I'm joined here today with the rest of the team, both from NG and Olin. I'll quickly introduce them. Here we have Will Madment, Civil Engineer II at NG, Tommy Polgic, Civil Engineering Manager at NG, Mujahid Ahmed, Electrical Engineer at NG, Charlie Branum, Senior Project Developer at NG, and then on the Olin side, we have Jeremy Goodman, Head of Campus Operations at Olin College, and Claire Rogers, Associate Director for Sustainability and Campus Engineering at Olin College. So, thank you. We do have a presentation. If you don't mind, I will try and share that with the group. Right. Can you see that or no?
No.
Try again. All right. How about now?
We got it.
Nice.
Right, let me click the presentation button so that you can see this and all of its grander. Awesome. So we are NG. I'm here representing NG. NG has been around for over 200 years and our predecessor company built and operated the Suez Canal. We are one of the largest distributed solar and storage companies in the country. We have over 500 operational distributed solar and storage projects in the United States. That includes 26 operational projects located in and around Massachusetts, an additional project under construction. And so then this Olin project here would be the 28th project for us in Massachusetts. And NG Structures, we're typically a long-term owner and operator of our projects. We will be for this project and we will look to be a good community partner with Olin College, we've partnered with on this project, as well as the town of Needham. So I will turn it over to Olin College to talk about this project and kind of our partnership, since we are selected by them to own and operate this project.
Thanks, Kristen. And what I can say, and Claire, please feel free to chime in, is this is a project that is very near and dear to Olin. Claire and I and some others have been working on this for, believe it or not, about four years. Yeah, so we're really excited that we were finally able to select NG as our partner this year and that we're going to be moving forward with this. Yeah, Olin is in the midst of creating a climate action plan, much like the town of Needham is. And yeah, this is really going to be one of our first major steps in implementing the plan.
Thank you so much, Jeremy. And we'll get into our product specifics. I understand that everyone on the board has received a copy of our application and our site plan. But just up at the top, like Jeremy said, highlighting the benefits of this project. Number one, it allows generation of renewable energy. That's not only aligned with Olin's climate action plan that's under development in the town of Needham's, but also Massachusetts Climate Action Plan and associated carbon goals with greenhouse gases. Another unique benefit of this project is it's serving as a living classroom for hands-on learning for the engineering students at Olin College. And there's going to be all sorts of awesome ways to use the project in understanding how it was built, operated, and looking at the data, using that in classes. I think the possibilities there are endless and pretty exciting. It's also going to provide electricity savings to Olin, reduce reliance on the electricity grid, provide covered parking in the extremely variable and harsh northeastern weather, as well as investment into the community. So we're super excited about all the benefits and we'll jump next into an overview of the project and some more detail. So the proposed carport structure is going to be a 480 kilowatts AC and it's going to be located in existing lot A on Olin's campus at 1,000 Olin Way. NG is going to own and operate the structure and generate the power in which Olin will enter into a power purchase agreement. The structure's operational life is 25 years and that carport is going to tie into an existing transformer owned by EverSource that is located behind Myliss Hall. In terms of schedule, we're targeting to build the project the summer when the student population on campus is lower and reach completion in the fall and reach full operations in Q4. So probably around November of this year, that's our anticipated schedule. In terms of an overview of the project, I will show you a couple of images of where it'll be and some of our preliminary renderings. So here's an aerial image of existing lot A. This is Olin's largest parking lot on campus. And we'll be putting the structures over the existing five vegetated islands. And so there will be five carport canopy structures. I'll toggle right back to this image so you can see those vegetated islands. So the carpets will there'll be five of them. Like I said, we'll tie in here. See if I can get my pen. Maybe not. Tie in behind this building over on the east of the image, behind the roundabout. And then here's our preliminary renderings of what the structure will will look like. And I'll pause here if there's any existing questions before we get into more of the product details, just kind of on the overview of the project, what the project looks like, what we're proposing to do.
So it looks like you're adding the 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 structure to accommodate the panels. It's a metal structure. I've never seen it before. It's very clever.
Yep, you're exactly right.
Oh, I spent the winter in Tucson. I've actually seen a number of these.
Is the carport?
Yeah, the same kind of design where it provides, actually provides shade and shelter for the cars. Is there any reduction in the number of parking spaces in the lot as a result of this?
No, the project is not going to impact any parking spaces.
Okay. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure that we need to understand the technical details of the project. There's really been no opposition from any town board. So, so, you know, I'll let you go on, but I don't think you need to get into a lot of detail.
Sure. That sounds good. Well, we can, we can definitely keep it high level and just show a few more slides and then, and then go back to questions. So you've seen these preliminary renderings. We'll go here to a couple more details. As we mentioned, the number of parking spaces will not be impacted. Access to the project, parking lot will not be impacted by the project that includes emergency vehicles. Our proposed minimum clearance height is 12 feet, minimum width clearance 30 feet, so that those are some more details here. We'll go quick overview of the equipment. Like you mentioned, it's a metal carport structure with PV modules mounted on top. Probably skip some of these details here.
Does the structure have to be blue? Or is that just a random color, just out of curiosity?
Blue is Olin's color.
Okay.
It's it's Olin blue. That's actually the name of the color.
I didn't know that one.
Honestly, that's what we call the color. I'm sure it has a different name.
Yeah. Just a little more detail on where the project will tie in. We did get some questions from that on the design review board. So it's going to be right here behind the hall on these existing transformers that are tucked away behind the Myliss Hall. This is going to be an emergency shutdown switch located there. For our lighting plan, here's our preliminary lighting plan, has some similar lighting we did on a different carport structure. We'll be removing the existing lighting in the parking lot and be putting lighting underneath the carport structure. We'll be keeping the same lighting density, the same color temperatures, what's there now. And the lighting is actually going to decrease the kind of light spillage from the existing license. It'll be more shaded with the carport. Here's a couple more photos of kind of some preliminary lighting from a different project that NG built.
Seems pretty high. What's the height of it? Looks like it's over 20 feet or so?
Well, so the the minimum clearance on this project you're seeing in the image is 12 feet, but the structure does have a little slant to it with the tilt. So the minimum clearance on one of the ends is 12. So yeah, it does look a bit higher.
Can I ask you a question? How much is 480 kilowatts of electricity? I mean, how many dorms is it going to power? And is it going to be offered to the the town if there's extra electricity?
It'll cover about 15% of our electric load.
And that drops in the wintertime, presumably with the weaker sun?
Yeah, it's it's about 15% of our annual load and there'll be less production in the winter.
We wish there could be enough production to have it available back to the community.
In a couple of years, I'm sure you'll consider that. All right, good. Thank you.
Well, I mean, I think the usual thing is if these produce excess electricity, they go into the power grid and the owner operators get credit. But given how big Olin is, I'm not surprised you're only making a small dent in your electric need, but that's good.
And also we have to work within whatever source can accommodate on our circuit just for that reason.
Yeah.
That it feeds back in.
Yeah. Any more questions on the lighting? I just have a few more slides on our vegetation plan and stormwater and then we'll that's about all that we have prepared. Let's jump right into the vegetation.
You said on your slide that the light spillage will be less than the existing lighting. And I guess you also assured us that these structures are under 35 feet, which may be the limit. I haven't looked in the industrial area. Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, both. Yes to both. We'll be under way under the maximum 35 foot height and the lighting, since the lighting is going to be more protected under the carpet structure than what's currently there right now, it will be kind of decreased in terms of the the spray or the the spread. I don't know what the right word is for that. Awesome. We can talk a bit about our vegetation plan. So with the project, we're planning to retain the existing conditions and return it. Once we are completed with construction, what's currently there is a mix of juniper bushes and grass. So we'll be replanting some non-invasive or naturalized plants there. And the panels are semi-translucent. They're actually a bifacial panel. And so that will hopefully support the vegetation and allow the light in. And and we have confidence in that. But, you know, in the event that with the plants aren't doing well, they're not getting adequate sunlight, we'll transition the vegetation to a more shade tolerant species. Marmaline impacts. I know we chatted before the official call that the project's not planning to alter, fill, or impact nearby wetlands. There is a small portion of the project within 100-foot wetland buffer zone. So we have applied for a request for determination of applicability with the Conservation Commission and we'll be meeting with them in two weeks. And we've been consulting with them up until this point. And no trees will be cut in those zones either. And then for stormwater, we are in compliance with the Needham Stormwater Bylaw and have stormwater best management practices that will be implemented on the project to make sure that our stormwater runoff is is complacent and we'll be utilizing the existing catch basins and stormwater management system that's already there from Olin. So the gutters and downspouts on the on the project design will flow into those. And actually recycle through the waters, water system on Olin, which is pretty cool.
Yeah, some, some people get worried about these things. They somehow think they're going to increase the rainfall, which, of course, it doesn't. The same amount of rain falls, whether it's a parking lot or whether it's a parking lot with solar panels. And if you don't have, if you don't have a problem now with the parking lot, you shouldn't have a problem with water recovery with solar panels.
But I'm impressed that you've got gutters to prevent runoff onto people's heads and cars. You're connecting it into the existing runoff structure, drainage structure. So it seems to be well thought out.
Without gutters, we have to worry about massive icicles in the winter, which no one wants.
Any other questions on our stormwater management?
No, I think, I think we probably will make as a condition of this, that you do comply with whatever the Department of Public Works wants.
Yep. We talked a bit at the top of the call about project schedule. We are planning to start construction this summer in June after, you know, we would obtain our remaining approvals, including our building permits with the the town of Needham. And we'll anticipate to complete in the fall of 2023 and then reach commercial operations this winter.
I just have a question, a little bit not on point, but what is the lifespan of these solar panels? How long do these systems work? I was, I was an early, I did an early solar installation when I built my house and it turned out to not work very nor last.
There's, there's there's varying lifespans on on panels, but ours were are for 35 years useful life. And for this project, we've designed it for a 25-year period with Olin and at the end of the project life. NG would be responsible for removing the system and responsible for all those costs. But yeah, our panels are typically 30 to 35-year-plus lifespan.
Is there some servicing that John's interested in? I have panels too, and they're getting older. Is there a servicing that can be done with an existing panel as opposed to throwing it out?
There are recycling programs for panels and that's something the industry I think has really embraced. I know that, you know, panels you might have got 20 years ago, maybe aren't as good as, definitely not as good as the technology has rapidly improved. So but there, there's, you could, yeah, you should look into it. I'm sure there's something.
There are some companies that we've talked to in Massachusetts that do solar panel recycling. So it's definitely becoming a bigger industry.
Okay. Are you done?
Yeah, that's actually my last slide. So
Thank you. So let me go.
I'm happy to navigate back and go back to some stuff. We want to talk about it further.
Yeah, well, you know, some questions might come up, but let me run through the comment we received for various town agencies. You did go before the design review board and they've written somewhat extensive letter, but they like your approach to the planting and the water and the installation. The plant, planning board just said they want to make sure that it complies with the relevant drainage, stormwater and runoff requirements. And we've discussed that. The building commissioner has no problem. Public Works has just noted that you probably need to make some revisions of your plan before you do a building permit to show the proper runoff. I'm a little surprised you're going in front of the Conservation Commission because we got a little letter from them saying that you didn't need approval. Public Health had no comment. Police had no comment. And I guess the the fire delivered us no comment. So there's, there's no problems raised by any of the comments from the public authorities. Daphne, do we have anyone from the public who wants to be heard on this?
They are. Yeah, there are no hands raised.
No hands raised. We do have some people looking in.
No, one second.
John, I have a question while they're circulating through the the other comments. That this is an application for waiver of parking plan and parking design requirements. Is this lot, were there any weight parking waivers issued for this existing college in the parking area?
Yeah, that's exactly, Mr. Chair. My exact sentiments were, I think this is an application for a modification of the 2000 approval. And that approval was for Franklin Olin College. Where here we have a different quote-unquote applicant and owner. So I'm highly in support of the project. I have no concern about that. I just have a technical kind of question that I was hoping we could huddle on as to how we phrase and or vote or approve.
And I'll just add, in a little bit of irony, I think the reason we have that original special permit is because at the time Needham had no parking regulations that were designed for a college like Olin. And I think what is now in Needham's zoning bylaws came out of the formulas that were used to develop the parking we do have. So I think we're actually in compliance and perhaps don't even need the special permit anymore.
Yeah, I did a quick read of it and I didn't see that there were any design waivers that were granted under that permit. It was really just went to the number of parking spaces, which under some calculations, you may have been sure. But I didn't see any design waivers. But I mean, I suppose it's a logical interpretation that the permit that exists related to a certain parking plan in a certain way, it's being changed by the installation here. So I can see that it's an appropriate, perhaps to go back and do an amendment to the special permit. Nick, Nick, I would think we're even though the equipment is going to be owned by someone else, I would think it's appropriate to just amend the permit that runs the Olin College. I mean, do you have a different thought?
No, I I just think that the should, does it matter if we just approve Olin as the applicant then?
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I do agree with you that probably the notice and the applicant should have been Olin rather than the engineering company, since Olin's the one who holds the permit. But I don't think anyone's deprived of notice by that here.
And they're acting as an agent of Olin.
Does it say that? Well, I don't know that it says that.
No, but that's, that's, that's clearly there.
In effect, that's what's going on.
It identifies him as a tenant. And that's why I think they just picked that from the options we give. And I think that's my, that was my only kind of technical thing, Mr. Chair, whether the applicant being a tenant and the original one, the original permit being the owner, there was an issue there.
No, I mean, I think, I think we can just amend the special permit to allow them to have a tenant making the construction that's been described on their lot.
Super.
Yes, that's, that's, I guess what I would find. Okay. Definitely, do I take it? We have no one from?
We have no one. We only have the Needham channel is at Handys tonight.
Okay, great. So unless someone on the board has a further question, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Nick, you want to fashion that motion?
I think I can try. So I'll put forth a motion to approve the modification of the September 25, 2000 special permit granted to Franklin W. Olin College of Engineering or requirements of section 5.1.3 of the zoning bylaw, parking plan and desire requirements and any applicable sections of the bylaw to include having a tenant install solar panel carports over lot A.
As described in the plans.
As described in the plans presented by NG Engineering.
And would you allow an amendment that the applicant be compliant with the drainage runoff requirements of the town?
I certainly would.
Second the motion, Howard?
Yes, I second that motion as amended.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so it's unanimous. Wonderful project. Glad that Olin College is leading the solar installation and hopefully it'll be the first of many in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, team. Good luck.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much, everyone. This has been great and we're super excited.
Nice job of presenting.
Terrific.
And we hope you'll stop by once it's completed and see it in all its glory.
Well, part of it's all in blue.
It's all in blue.
Yeah. All right. So members of the board stay on a minute. We don't have a very good turnout tonight, but I might as well get the thoughts of the two of you that are here about our future meeting schedule and if there's anything we can do to improve the process of writing decisions. I sent around an email a while ago saying that both the select board and the planning board are meeting in person, even though they don't have to. And I asked for comment saying that somehow I was inclined to go back to in-person meetings just because like it's kind of my instinct. That's how town boards want to work. That would be with the ability of any member who couldn't show up to join by Zoom to participate. I think Howard responded to me. He felt kind of like I did. John Tampkin didn't feel like I felt. He, he likes Zoom. He likes to stay home. Nick, you
He likes his space. I just feel like I want to be in a room with you guys. That's all I care about. But I agree, John. I think that getting back to the traditional, we'll use that word instead of any other word. I think it's, you know, I read the old decisions like this one here that talked about how it was done at the senior center, right? Like, I feel like that's part of the process and I think we should be back in person.
And Howard, you still?
Yeah, no, no, so I do. So no. You know, as I do, so no, I, I, I think there may be times when uh, that we, we, we need to use uh, uh, Zoom technology. Is a town capable of doing a, a, a buy both in person? It's a little more complicated.
Yeah, well, we, 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 we'll certainly have a learning process, but I, I think Daphne can answer that better than me, but I think the Charles River Room is equipped to do that.
Yeah, the Charles River Room is equipped to do it. Uh, and because cables involved, uh, it's a very high quality. Uh, recording and uh, it's not as though it were as just a strictly uh, in person with the owl. There's a little bit more to it, so it, it definitely looks more robust. Um, uh, so all the meetings that I know that are taking place like with the planning board. Um, I think the climate change, no, the planning board for sure. They are both in person and um, and remote. So if, when you go back in person, you will be a hybrid meeting.
And you can handle it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I was, I participated in a couple of planning board meetings and there were actual planning board members that weren't. Most of them were there, but one wasn't and was participating at Zoom. And they had a mix of live comment from the audience and comments from Zoom and kind of alternated between them. And the Alex seemed to have down the technique and you, you seem confident that you can do it.
Yeah, and, and, and it's going to be when uh, when it's in the Charles River Room. Um, and it's not, I believe the remote part of it is handled through cables, uh, ca- the cable company. Doesn't go through the owl. The owl won't be in, in my control. Um.
Well, what is the owl? The owl?
The owl is, is a device where you can have a, a, an in-person meeting. And you can also have remote participation and it's pretty much used for all sorts of meetings now in-house. But.
All right. Well, so, so, so John is running May and he wants to do it on Zoom. But let, let's tentatively plan that we'll resume in person in June. I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm probably creating a problem for myself because I have to come up from the cave, but sorry, I think it's the right thing to do.
So.
Yes.
So um, for right now, so then I'll go ahead and, and all, like I said, between now and the end of the year, we have the Charles River Room in reserve. So it's not a problem in terms of um, you just won't be, well, if you don't attend, uh, you will be invited as you normally will be, but.
Well, if you don't count a person, you'll be able to join by zone.
Part, yes, correct.
And, 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 and um, i- i- in, in, under the current regime, as I understand it, we don't even need a quorum in the room. If, if we weren't under the kind of current special rules, then the we would need a quorum in the room for somebody to participate remotely, which we've also, the town has now authorized us to do under a different piece of legislation. And we did amend our bylaws to say that a quorum is two. So um, we can't do much with two, but in any event, I, I, I think there's ample authority for us to let people participate by Zoom. Um, I, I invite comments about the decision writing process.
Yeah, yeah. So, so just to clarify, I'm sorry. So we, we received in the packet a update schedule, but we're going to change it now from June all the way to December in person.
Yeah.
No, it'll be, yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll try, we'll try June in person. We'll see how it feels. And John can finally get his donuts. So, so I, all right. So I invite the, the one other thing I like to talk about and we'll probably have to do it when we have the other people. What, 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 what can we do to make the decision writing process better and quicker?
Well, I mean, uh, I, I would comment, I enjoy getting comments from others and, and appreciate a flow of, of, of information. And I know John Tamkin uh, works through um, Daphne. And you know, and we were just asked to review the uh, open meeting law requirements and exceptions. And so I just, you know, I, I raised the issue, John, and you responded with a detailed response. So wh- 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 what is the conclusion that, that we are?
Well, you know, you, you know, my, my conclusion is that uh, uh, I, I think it's more likely than not that it's appropriate for us to have direct discussions. I, 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 not, not everybody comes to the same conclusion. Um, um, but my, my attitude is, is that it's more likely than not that it's appropriate and uh, it's a heck of a lot easier for us to contact each other directly as we try to make these decisions work. And so we, I have been and I, I think we continue to do that until uh, unless there's some clear direction that that's wrong.
I, I read what you guys circulated and I agree with John. I think that well, first off, as the junior person on the board, I'm going to depend on everybody first, you know, to learn and to grow and everything else. So I think we need to communicate with each other. And I don't think the, I don't think it prohibits us from doing so. Um, that's my first comment. My second comment, you know, I've only written two of them and I've been slow on both of them, just life and everything else. So I got to get better. But one thing that I will say.
You did a good job on this last one.
Thank you.
It was slow, but it was good.
You, you know, uh, one thing I will say that I don't know if this has ever been done, but I know in the city the applicants typically submit the first draft of the decision that then gets reviewed.
Yeah. Do you really think that would help us?
I mean, I think some of the players that come often, I think some of the players, the, especially those with counsel with a handful of the lawyers that, you know, at least in my short tenure, I've seen often, I think that will get it to be a little bit faster. Um, if we, if we were open to that, I just don't know if that's.
I think, I, I, you, you, you know, I think we're open to people submitting drafts, but you know, kind of, kind of, my, my feeling is unless it's an extremely complicated matter, it probably isn't making the process go any quicker. I mean, I, it's, it's maybe a personal preference, but I mean, I, I'd rather organize it in a way I think is logical than spend a bunch of time
Figuring it out.
Work, work with what someone else did. Um, I, I mean, I think we have some, it says people are free to submit drafts, but they don't.
Well, I, 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 I just would echo what, what Nick was saying. Uh, in Boston, it's a prerequisite for the applicant to submit a proposed draft and board.
What does the planning board do?
What's that?
What does the planning board do? Do you know, Daphne?
The planning board, I believe, is written by, by staff.
By the staff for the first draft?
Yeah, I believe so. Unless it's a very, very complicated project, then uh, you know, like I believe then the, the applicant does for the very large, you know, like children's hospital, things like that. But I, you know, I want, I, I'll look into that and get back to you.
Hey, John, i- if, if you're of the opinion that, you know, you like to organize a certain way, then you know, you can ignore the, the proposal, but, but you know, a lot, a lot of these decisions have recurring themes. And you know, it's, if, if you're at the focus is to get it done more quickly, I, I, I think to ask for a submittal would get that done more quickly.
Yeah, of course, you probably half of our cases, there's no lawyer.
Right.
Or at least give them the option, maybe remind the local lawyers who we see more of, that they have the right. If they're the ones complaining, I agree with you, John. This is our duty. We're serving. We need to be faster. There's no question about that, right? But maybe just reminding the, the represented parties that their council has the right to present.
Yeah, well, definitely. Yeah, that, that, Daphne, you should do that in the process.
Well, I, you know.
I can see George Gunter, you know, submitting these because he does it a lot and, and there's a lot of repetition, for example.
Have, have you had any conversations with the applicants, lawyers?
Uh, in terms of any concerns about the, the length and time.
Terms of them submitting a proposal.
No, I've never had that discussion with them. I know in, yeah, I, you know, in the past, I've had experiences where an applicant, but it wasn't working with you guys. Uh, another board, but you know, but this board just, you know, just I, in terms of time, I've never had any complaints. Uh, I rarely have any complaints from uh, applicants about the, the length. It's very rare. And you have ninety days.
Well, you've got the perfect answer. When they give you crap, you say a little stretch. It says we have ninety days.
And, but you know, if I, but you know.
Days, really?
But yeah, you don't want to know that. Because you guys always get it in way, you know, at the latest, you know. You've got, you get it in before the next meeting for sure, like.
Yeah, which is a thirty day cycle.
But it's normally three weeks. You get them done within three weeks.
Yeah. Uh, so, so uh, you know, kind of the other thing that's rolling around on all of this is the town clerk was giving Daphne noise about having separate signature pages. And I was in there this week and she gave me noise about it. And uh, you know, it was, you know, this makes extra work for the town clerk to certify these pages. And I responded by saying, well, you should remember we're all volunteers.
That's true.
No, and I didn't go on to say, and you're getting paid uh, to do it, but um, i- 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 it probably is, you, you mean, I guess my reaction is, is that it's a little, it's probably a little sloppy. They have our decisions with three separate signature pages. And it, it honestly is a little neater and to cut down the paper. And so I was thinking if we're going back to in-person meetings, that maybe what we would do is just sign them and in order to avoid all the running around that we used to do, Nick has not been in that. But we, we do a lot, a lot of driving around, but you know, maybe it would just make sense as a practice uh, to sign them at the next meeting. And it is somebody, somebody who needs to sign doesn't come, they can suffer the, the penalty of having drive down to see Daphne to sign.
Yeah. So John, that, 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 so we're, we're conceding a thirty day cycle then, if.
Yes, we are.
Earlier.
Yeah.
I think we're trying to expedite it.
Well, I am, you know, and, and, and it's, it's it's um, we're, we're not, we're not really making the three weeks very often. Um, so, so I don't, I, 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 that's, that's, that's what I'm thinking. Um, it mean, if everybody wants to renew our efforts to try to do this in three weeks, we'll run the decisions around. And maybe the answer is we'll do that unless we find it's dragging on. And then if it's dragging on, we'll just wait and sign them at the next hearing. Okay. All right. Well, we, 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 we got, we got to get John Tamkin into this.
Since he's going to want to be in person and signing multiple signature pages in wedding and driving around.
No, he, he wants electronic signatures.
That would be nice.
Oh, by the way, just as an aside, there was a loss in his family. I saw it on the.
Yeah, do you know, you know what it was? Who, who, he lost.
Other father, s- somebody very close in his family, uh, uh, it was, has passed away, I think. Um, I, I can, I can follow up um, and send everybody an email. That's helpful. I'd appreciate that, Howard. So I could share. It, it was a father or mother, somebody significant. If I was, can I, if I can, can I do, can I look at my emails now? Can I do that?
Yeah.
Let's see if I can quickly do everything. My uh, hold on a second. All right. Hold on a second. Tell you right now. John, when do you leave for Arizona typically?
New Year's.
Okay.
And you go away in August, right?
August.
You can join by Zoom if you like to work in the middle of the night.
You know, I did it for a year. I worked from there for a year. It was tough.
Yeah.
The kids were in school there, which made it really hard because I'd go to bed at two in the morning and I'd be up at six thirty for school. So I'd have to break up sleep.
I say, here's notice from the temple with sadness. We write to let you know that the passing of uh, Kendrew Caparo, beloved brother and brother-in-law of Cindy and John Tamkin cherished uncle. So brother, it's, it's, it could be the wife's, the wife's brother or, or, or his wife's brother or his, and, and his brother-in-law, it looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a tragedy. He must have died young.
Yeah, to that. All right. So anything else we want to discuss tonight? Well, well, thank you, everyone, for.
Daphne, how many next week, next month?
Are me?
How many on the board?
Uh, I believe it's John, I think it's four of you.
No.
Yeah, how many on the? How many, how many cases?
How many cases for next month? Only one. We only have one and it's uh, one forty-five Rosemary Street. Say, it's the same thing. It's uh, again, one of the medical building, one of the medical offices are expanding. So they need to change the parking use. So um, that's, you have just one case. And I'm going to see if I can get um, Clay to cover for on Zoom.
Okay.
Cause since he knows.
I will, I will definitely be aware.
And I'm definitely away too. You're away too, Howard?
I'm away. So I think it's.
And so it's Peter. No, it's only the three of you. So it's Nick. Um, yeah, so it's only, so, but Peter said he was definitely coming in May.
All right, and John.
Peter is retired. I think he's traveling.
But he will be back for the meeting. He will be.
It, 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 John is on board to chair. And so Nick, you're available for the May meeting.
I plan on being here May, June and July.
Okay, great.
All right.
All right, thank you. I think, I think we're adjourned.
Thank you. Nice to see everybody.
All right. Night.
Bye-bye. Thank you. Thank you.